Go. Thank you. Who is the, who is handling, who's hosting our meeting?
I am.
Yes, thank you. Okay. And Linda Molno, are you present?
Present.
And I'm Chair Liz Hollingsworth and I am here. The agenda for our meeting is posted 72 hours in advance. And the city welcomes public comment. And Kristin, I note that your email is one. The public may submit comments to. Did you receive any public comments?
I did not receive any public comments.
Thank you. Let's go on to the minutes from our July 26th meeting as we did not meet in August. And is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I have a correction.
Please proceed, Steve.
In the minutes, Director Throne's name is misspelled as Thorn in one instance. I hate to be a nitpicker, but it's what I do.
Thank.
Other than that, I had no problem. And so with that correction, I would move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second to approving the minutes with a correction from Lois? Any other discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, any opposed, say no. Thank you. The motion carries and our July minutes are approved. The bulk of our meeting today are our trustees report. And before we start that, I want to welcome our new community services director Kathy Johnson and our management analyst Kristin Shigenaga. Did I get that?
Yep, you got it.
And we know Jeff Plumley, but he's with us today in his role as our interim city librarian. And we're going to hear all about this from Dr. Marlowe. We're glad to have you with us today. And we're going to hear all about that in Agenda Item Eight. And during our trustee reports today, I'd like to suggest that we take some time to tell our new staff, each one of us about our liaison roles and background, a bit about ourselves in terms of what's important to us as individuals about the Crowell Public Library. You know, not all our hobbies. And I'd like to limit each of us if we each take about five minutes. I think this is doable. And I thought we would start with Lois and go through our trustee reports and then I would end with my chairperson report. Lois is a longstanding library supporter as a member of our Board of Trustees, but she's also been on the foundation and the Friends of the Library. Lois, good morning.
Morning. Well, I didn't realize I was going to start, but I have lived in San Marino with my husband and children since 1964. And our children all attended San Marino schools. We've been involved in the community since moving here and I've been a real estate broker in San Marino for 55 years. I own my own company. I was past president of the San Marino Realty Board, president of the San Marino Rotary, fellow of the Huntington Library and other affiliations. When Betty Brown, who was mayor of San Marino, asked me to join the Library Foundation when it was formed, and I served on that committee until three years ago when I became a trustee of the, of the, of the San Marino Public Library. When the foundation was established, we raised money to help the library wherever it was needed. When it was decided that our existing library did not meet the needs of the community, the foundation spearheaded a drive to raise the money for a new library with wide community support. The foundation raised approximately $8 million from our residents. And then with the generous support of the Crowell family and the city, we were able to build our beautiful current library. My numbers may be a little off, but I want to stress it was with the complete cooperation of the entire community that loved the library. This was possible. We did not have large corporate sponsors. Only local residents contributed between a hundred and many thousand dollars each. San Marino is a community of well-educated people who demand the best for themselves and their children. I firmly believe that our city wants and needs a strong library with a librarian who reports directly to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Lois. I learned something about you today, too. So let's go on to Dr. Linda Molno, who's going to give us some background and an update about our beloved Crane Art Gallery.
Okay, I wasn't. I, if you told me I was going to do this, Liz, I'm sorry, my senior brain just had a little glitch, but I'll, off the top of my head, I haven't lived in San Marino quite as long as Lois, but I have lived here since 1972. My six children went all the way through the San Marino schools. I now have a grandson in the San Marino City Schools. And another one that's over at Community Church Nursery School that will be attending one of the San Marino Elementary Schools in just a few years. While my children were in school, I was, I was very active playing a leadership role in just about every activity that they were involved in. At the top of the list, PTA, just about every job from president on down. I was very active at San Marino Community Church, where all of my children attended and eventually became members. I served on the Board of Elders there. I was, was very active in the, in the Boy Scouts as a, when the, when all, my children, five of them are boys, so there was a lot of Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts and everything else. I was very active, as was my husband, in, in, in the scouting community. It was something we'd both done, or I had done as a child. Also, also, also very active with San Marino Little League. Have rather proud to say I was the first woman they actually allowed to be a manager of a farm team. My, I have one son who still hasn't forgiven me for not letting him pitch. After the, after my youngest was able to get himself to school, I decided it was time for me to go, go back to school and started taking classes at Pasadena City College. Went from there to Cal Poly Pomona and then to Claremont Graduate School where I earned a PhD in history and then taught for approximately 20 years in the history department at Cal Poly Pomona. Towards the end of that, that time teaching, I was, was asked by several members of the, the then-current Board of Trustees for the Crowell Library if I would consider putting in an application to be a trustee. Given my, my love of books, my love of learning, I felt like that was a perfect place for me to, to turn my volunteer activities to. I'd taken a little bit of a hiatus while I was teaching from doing that and have been active now with the Board of Trustees for, for quite a few years. I, if I calculate right, I think this is my, going to be my last, last year with this term before I'm, I'm termed out. The, the, I've served on the Board of Trustees as, as president several times. And am absolutely thrilled that Liz has the job right now. She's doing a phenomenal job. We should thank her every day for her leadership role. It's one thing to volunteer. It's a whole nother thing to be a leader. And I think those of us that have been active in some of these organizations realize that, the importance of that. Currently, I am acting as a liaison to the, to the Crane Art Gallery. This, this really dovetails into something that has become part of my retirement passion and that is art. Started painting about six years ago and the, the little bit of an upset in this room that I'm sitting in right now is because I'm trying to turn my, my former professor's office into an art studio. Someday it will happen. The Crane Art Gallery went through a difficult time, as did everyone else during the, during the pandemic. And we moved from being a, a sponsor of art exhibits that allowed artists to come in and hang some of their, some of their artwork and to hold receptions, invite the community, invite their friends. And we have asked artists in the past and will continue to, to voluntarily donate a portion of their sales to the, to the art gallery. And we have used those monies to, to purchase anything that we need in order to keep things, keep things running. The, for my report today, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start off with a complaint so that I can end up on a happier note. I do want to complain that right now there is no visibility whatsoever for the Crane Art Gallery on the San Marino City website. There is a, there is, the only link on there gives our guidelines and a proposal for an exhibit for an artist. It doesn't, it, it, and, and this is, it's gone back and forth. And I, I do understand that, you know, the website's only as good as the people that are putting the information up. But it would be really nice if there was some kind of a current focus on trying to, along with the visibility of the library itself, which is a whole nother story that I won't get into. The, the current exhibit, well, let me tell you first, the, the exhibit that just ended on September 10th was Tian Komoto. It was up short for a short period of time. We've gone back to real-time exhibits. We have, with our first real-time exhibit with Tian, she was willing to do the exhibit without, without a reception. In the past, we've done the receptions in the bathroom and it wasn't clear whether we'd really be able to use that, how safe it would be. And we thought with the given situation of the Delta variant on the, on the rise at the time, that it probably was a good idea not to, to do it. And she agreed with that. Currently, the exhibit up is Sean Kirkpatrick. That will be up until the end of October. Sean has agreed to a reception out on the patio, which I think we will probably, the, the committee has been, has been discussing this. And we're, we feel at this point in time, as long as weather is cooperating, that the patio is probably the best place for receptions. And, you know, until, until circumstances change, we will, we will keep it that way. The next time slot would be November 6th through December 31st, taking us to the end of 2021. And that spot has been offered to Mary Ann Fortinotti. She was one of the artists that we had give a, do a virtual exhibit, which is what we were doing during, during the pandemic when no one could come into the library. We had, we had a link on the website to various artists' websites. And it was, it was an effort to try and keep the, to keep the art in the forefront. It was not very successful as far as artists selling anything. In fact, I am, from, from what I have heard, I've, I've yet to hear of an artist that actually sold something from, just because they were exhibiting on our, with, through our link. If that, if that information changes, I'll let you know at the, at the next meeting because I expect that we will meet as a committee soon. As a committee, we're in the process of looking for one more member. We have a few ideas as, as of yet have not gotten from anyone. So if any of you are knowledgeable about somebody in the community that is interested in art and might be, might be a good fit for our committee, please send me a, send me a notice. I would really appreciate it. And unless you have any questions, Liz, I think I went over my five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. How about, let's hear from our, my fellow budget and CIP liaison, Genevieve Chen. And Genevieve, you're muted.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, everyone. I have, I can't compare to Lois or Linda, but I've also been living in San Marino since 2000. So it's been 21 years and I raised my son. He went through San Marino schools for most part. Last few years, he went to prep. But overall, he started from kindergarten and on all the way till ninth grade. He really, really enjoyed the neighborhood, the school district, and I certainly loved the neighborhood. That was the reason that we moved here. And I, during his school years, I have participated in many volunteering opportunity, mainly in the school activities and in the classroom circle time. Of course, I got my share of germs. And, but it was so fun. This is the only way to know all the kids and the moms. It's amazing group of people who caring so much about their children, the school district. So with that said, you can't go without the library because that is the place that we frequent a lot. From summer reading to school project. Jeff is always very helpful to anyone who has a question, looking for a book, who does not know how to use a library. So thank you, Jeff. And we, I still, I have a very old style library card still, not the high-tech. It's a paperish kind of a library card that I still have in my wallet. So we've been using the library a lot. And once he went to college, I kind of felt I need to have a way to continue to serve the, I mean, to serve the community. This is when I start volunteering, serving at the library board. Amazing group of people who's so passionate about the library. I, my involvement initially with the library was more of a user. And, but now I get to see how it works behind this scene. So it's pretty impressive how, I mean, this is the result why we have such a wonderful library. And Linda, Liz, Lois and Alden, you know, Steve, everyone is so amazing that have brought in so much expertise. I have just nothing but good words about them. They are so impressive and I have learned a lot from everyone. And that's, I mean, I'm the newest, I think, serving on the board. So it's a pleasure and I really enjoy it. So a little background, I used to work for Warner Brothers Studios for years as it was, I was a financial analyst, but I do budgets and forecasts for the movies. So it's a little different. So with Liz's leadership, I've been working along her for budget liaison. And we usually trying to meet with the analysts on the neat basis. Our goal is to try to monitor our budget and make sure that we have sufficient funds for purchasing new books or any other needs for the library to continue to thrive. So I would say we're pretty conservative when it comes to numbers. And we try to trim whatever that we don't need and focus on our main business, which is books and providing the best that we can to serve the community. This is been a pleasure. It's been a journey and, and thank you for the city's staff constant support to our questions. And sometimes we're not very familiar with the rules and regulations. So thank you, everyone, for assisting us for us to do our job. Thank you.
Thank you, Genevieve. Let's move on and hear from our liaison for marketing and publicity, Mr. Steve DoMeyer, also Warner Brothers alum.
True, true. I have that in my background as well. Well, first of all, I wanted to say welcome to Kathy and Kristen. It's nice to have you on board here and I'm sure this is like overwhelming for you, hearing all the histories of everybody. And I'm learning stuff too, which is great. I did want to take a second to wish Liz a happy birthday today. It's Liz's birthday. Yay.
I know how you found that out. Thank you very much.
Did we sing? No.
I, I was just, I was just.
Just kidding.
No, no, no singing. We'll be out of, we'll be off key and out of sync, that's for sure. I'll briefly tell you my role and background. Yeah, I was at Warner Brothers before that. I was at NBC. And I was at the Disney Channel before that. And then Warner Brothers for, for many years. My background is in television marketing. So if you've enjoyed shows like Dawson's Creek and Buffy the Vampire Slayer, I was the person that helped promote that. So all those little on-air promos, the commercials you see, that's what I did for years and years and years. Until 2015, when I started my own consulting company. And so now what I do is I work with individuals to help them tell their stories better. And then I donate a lot of time to help other people market themselves better and other organizations like the City of San Marino. I, I assist whenever called on to do that. So I also teach at Loyola Raymond University. I've done that since 2009. It's a course I, I took when I was a student there called Entertainment Industry Careers, where I bring in experts from the industry to talk about their jobs, their careers, and let the students know what's available for them and then help them get jobs along the way. So I've been enjoying doing that every spring semester since 2009. As far as the City of San Marino goes, I've been involved in San Marino since 1977, which is when I met this really terrific woman while working at the Greek Theater who lived in San Marino, married her four years later. And, and then in 1995, we bought the house she grew up in from her parents. And that's where we live on Sherwood Road. So we are one of four families on this stretch of Sherwood that bought their parents' homes. And so it's the next generation living here on Sherwood Road in San Marino, which is kind of fun. My involvement with the city started with the San Marino Little League, like Linda did. Yeah, I coached teams along the way. Was on the board for the San Marino Little League. And as that term ended, as, as my kids were leaving Little League, I just sort of segued into the Library Foundation. I'm sorry, the Schools Foundation after that. The Schools Foundation was on that. Then when that ended, I moved on to the Library Foundation and worked on the Library Foundation for years and years, eventually becoming the president of it. And we ran the Delicious Destinations. And, and when in 2000, when we were talking about building the library, I was the head of the Press and Ballistic Commission to get the advertising out to build the new library and work with Carolyn Crane, the librarian and other fabulous people, including Betty Brown, the mayor at the time, to raise the funds to build the brand-new library, which is now 20 years old. It's amazing how time goes by so quickly. And then I was added to the Board of Trustees a few years ago, which I've really enjoyed serving on the board. I've learned a lot about how everything works and been able to be a strong advocate for the library because I am a very passionate library advocate. I got my first library card when I was three years old in the city of Los Angeles and have used libraries ever since. It's a great repository of knowledge, a great leveling of society. So everybody has access to knowledge. So I'm very passionate about that, which is why I served on the foundation for as long as I did and why I'm on the Board of Trustees now. I was recruited by someone on this Zoom call to be part of the San Marino Center Task Force. Reluctantly, I, I had to be talked into it. Dr. Marlowe, everyone else said yes right away, Steve. You resisted. But that has been one of the best experiences of my life, too. This really cohesive group that came together, citizens of San Marino, architects and, and just different business people, talking about how can we make this a really fun, viable, long-term, terrific facility for the City of San Marino that'll be part of the Community Services Campus with the library. So the fact that the library is part of Community Services, there, the Recreation Division of it has certain needs that the library facility could not possibly fill and Stoneman School is not doing now. So having this new revitalized building will be terrific for everybody. And I've really enjoyed working on that. As I've said on many calls before, but it's new to you Kathy and Kristen because you've never met me. The, the group has, has not always agreed on everything. We've had a lot of disagreements on things, but we disagree without being disagreeable. And we come to consensus and everyone seems to be headed down the right path. And it's been a really enjoyable process for me, a way to give back to the community, which I really appreciate by adding my expertise and, and, and marketing sensibilities and learning from other people. And just most, well, we'll hear about the color in just a section when we, we get to that part. But it's, it's been a good process for me of making sure that the library fits into the Community Services and is branded the right way. That's what I'm, I'm hoping to, to help with as well. I was really impressed at how the library handled the whole pandemic situation. I mean, just it, it's, it's something I was really astonished with. The fact that, oh, you know, we're all shut down and you have to accommodate these other people coming in who are going to use the city offices and still have curbside service, which I took advantage of several times. And the staff is always very, very helpful and just seems to take whatever comes along in stride. And I was really appreciative of that. So there's a lot of things coming up that need to be done with the library. As, as the library was built in 2000, I was remodeling this house in 2000. So I know that different things happen after that 20-year period. Things need to be refurbished. In fact, today, I'm awaiting the delivery of our new dryer because it's, it was, it reached its end. So now it needs to be redone. So the repainting, the re-roofing, the things like that needs to be done to get this library, the, the focal point of the community and a really terrific resource for so many people. And I really encourage everybody in the community to visit the library at different times today because you see how it's used. I, I was fortunate enough to write a book using the library in those quiet morning hours in the, in the, on one of the little cubbies there facing Huntington Drive. That's a great resource. After school, of course, you know, toddlers having storytime. I mean, there's all sorts of ways this library is really, really the hub of the community. And I'm, I'm very honored and pleased to be able to serve in that fashion. So as we move forward, I want to make sure that, that it remains a viable source. The outpouring of the community to fund it initially and to support it through Delicious Destinations and other donations that, that they do is really remarkable. And I'm anxious to, to continue that process because look at, look at the, the energy and fervor that come to support the library from people. It's really a remarkable thing. That's it.
Thank you, Steve. My turn. And I'm Liz Hollingsworth. I live over on Darby Road where we're very well taken care of by Michael Throne and Chief in Control, especially last week and where we had a couple break-ins on the street. But they solved them so fast. I was just so pleased. I worked at Carver School. I was the principal there for 21 years and I retired in 2016, kind of. I'm still consulting for the school district and that's going to end in October. And I, right away, I, I came a member of the library board. And what I bring with me is knowledge about reading, love of reading, and feeling the importance of the outreach about reading to the children in our community. I, as Steve mentioned, I'm really proud of so many of the things that are done at the Crowell Public Library. And back in 2018, the Crowell Public Library was ranked in the top 10 libraries in California and the top 6% in the nation. And I think that's due to the work of the marvelous staff, the appeal of the programming. And that includes before COVID, but also during COVID. We are one of the few libraries in our area that use a circulation system based on the RFID. And that was researched and done by trustee Eldon Swanson, along with staff, as well as funded by the San Marino Public Library Foundation. The Library Foundation also donated new computers that were installed just a couple months ago. It's very exciting. We have a lot of partnerships about. We have a lot of partnerships about programs such as with the San Marino Historical Society, the Chinese Club of San Marino, the LA Opera, Huntington Hospital. So many children's programs, not only the storytime, but a really great bilingual storytime where local volunteers read the story both in English and in Mandarin. We have a great Chinese language material collection. It needs to grow a little bit more because volunteers actually go to China to purchase the materials and they haven't been able to travel very much lately. So we really have a need in that area. The bathroom was heavily used for programming and rented by local groups. And the shower patio was quickly converted during COVID for outdoor usable space during the pandemic with some small concerts and some children program. My current report is that I met on September 16th and I had the pleasure of meeting Kathy and Kristen. And we worked on the September agenda along with Jennifer Nguyen. I also have received letters from the San Marino Public Library Foundation. And they came on Friday. And this is to Liz and to Jeff. And they want us all to know that the San Marino Library Foundation was very fortunate during our trivia night fever event to have an auspicious number of supporters. We would like to recognize these supporters with a donation of $2,725 to enhance the acquisitions to the Crowell Public Library collections. And the second letter is also from the Library Foundation in honor of Suzanne Crowell. The Public Library Foundation would like to honor Suzanne Crowell with this donation of $1,000 to enhance the acquisitions of the Crowell Public Library Collection. And Jeff, I understand you received a copy of the letter. And did you receive the checks?
Yes, please. That's right.
Great. Okay, so he's got the money. All right. But isn't that great? And just these two actions, the other great news out of the San Marino Public Library Foundation is working with the Pasadena Community Development Department. They have created an endowment for the library and it is signed, sealed, and ready. And their board committed to putting 10% of any proceeds from any of their fundraisers directly into the endowment. They're also discussing perhaps having some fundraisers strictly for the endowment. So that's from, thank you from Cindy Chan from the Library Foundation. I have a couple of follow-up questions that are questions we've asked in previous meetings. And I just want to get them out there. And Kathy or Dr. Marlowe, if you have answers, you could answer now or during your report, or you can find out the answers for a future meeting. And Ken, one of the, some of these might be for you, too. When will the City Council honor our retired trustee Eldon Swanson? When will a new trustee or trustees be appointed to our board? And then if you could give us a follow-up on staffing, our June minutes showed the need for library assistance, new clerks and new pages. And now we have to fill the city librarian position. I'm also curious if there are any issues in staffing in light of the city vaccine mandate. And I'm specifically talking only library staff. Also, I think a lot of organizations, when there's a change in leadership, look and maybe create an opportunity to restructure different departments. And if something like that is happening, we really are interested in getting the city librarian position filled quickly. But if that's going to change, we'd just like open and transparent communication in advance of such changes.
Liz, I can, I can answer, okay, I can answer virtually all of those questions. Would you like me to wait, though, for my item? Or do you want that now?
Why don't you go ahead right now while they're fresh in our mind?
Okay, although I took notes. Oh, you can't see that. Okay, because of my screen. But I took notes. All right. Let me just go down the list. So far, we have avoided in-person presentations since the pandemic started as a result of, you know, the pandemic and the Delta variant and so forth. We've received a lot of donations from very generous people and organizations over the last year and a half. And we've told them to stay away from council meetings and that we would, we would have a day once, once all this draws to a close, where we would be honoring people. And so I would expect that the acknowledgement of any outgoing commissioners, including trustee Swanson, would probably happen at that point in time. So our city clerk is keeping a list and the list is long of people that we're going to need to bring in and honor. And I mean, I almost think it's going to need to be its own special meeting at this point because we have so many people that are so gracious with their time and money. But it will happen. We just are trying to wait until the variant is down. But thank you for the reminder about that. The new trustee, I think that is an ongoing process that the liaisons are working with the city clerk. That is the one where I would be happy to defer to the mayor if you'd like to weigh in on that. But my best information is that the recruitment is ongoing. And unfortunately, until we have a slate of applicants, I don't know that I can give you a timeline. I don't know that any of us can give you a timeline. But that is, that is still going on. And I know that, I know that everybody is very grateful to Genevieve for stepping in and being part of this group. All right, staffing. I believe Kathy can address this when she gets to her portion as well. But I believe that our part-time positions have been filled and those recruitments have largely been successful. We did hold off on those while the library was closed. There was no reason to bring staff aboard when the library was not open. But I do think that our HR department did a Herculean task and filled a whole bunch of positions. There is no restructuring planned for the department. So nothing to, nothing to keep you involved in because we won't be doing that. We will be looking for a city librarian. That'd actually be part of my report a little bit later. But I suppose I could just cover it right now. That will be Kathy's responsibility, working with me. And so she is working on what that brochure is going to look like. We want to do a thorough recruitment. We want to take the opportunity to figure out what we need going forward and do a really nice brochure on that. And so Kathy and I will be working together to launch that recruitment through HR. And while I know that we don't want to take longer than we need to take, we don't want to take shorter than we need to take either. This is an important position, as you all know intimately. And we want to be sure that we're making a good decision for the city and for the community. So Kathy will be undertaking that. And then in terms of staffing issues related to the vaccine mandate, obviously, there are a lot of confidential pieces to this that cannot be discussed. I would say that there are some unvaccinated persons in the library staff. And I'm not really at liberty to disclose who or where those people are. And it will remain to be seen what happened. I certainly can say on behalf of all of us, including the City Council, we do not want to lose any of our staff. We are very critical for the staff that we have. And everybody has done fantastic work and loves the community. And your staff loves the library. And we certainly hope to keep them, but we'd like to also keep them safe. So we will see what happens there. The unrepresented employees do have a deadline coming up in the next week to submit proof that they are fully vaccinated or that they've received their final dose of the, of whatever vaccine they're going to get. Or that they're requesting a medical or religious accommodation. So that deadline will be coming. And those unrepresented employees basically represent all of the part-time employees over at the library. All of the full-time employees over at the library, with the exception, of course, of Kathy, are represented by CEA, the City Employees Association. And that union is still in negotiations with the city. And so until that concludes, there is no implementation date. That's part of what's being negotiated. And I think, Madam Chair, I think that covered everything.
I think that's great. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
So one thing that now I want to go back to is the report about the San Marino Center. Steve and Ken.
Yeah, as I alluded to briefly, in my notes, we had had a subcommittee meeting to physically be at the San Marino Center a couple weeks ago for colors. And it's really been an interesting process because, as I mentioned before, it's been very collaborative. And we've got people, Al Bog is done flooring for years and Jennifer Giles has certainly got an eye for taste and colors, being an architect. And we had Jamie Gertmannian was there and we all had different opinions, but we kind of melded together and come up with a color scheme that was an adjustment of what had been presented to us originally that I think is going to work really, really well. Pleased that that outcome. Mr. Mayor, do you want to add anything extra to do the process of redoing the San Marino Center?
Yeah, I actually, you know, it was Aldo's last, last week, last Friday was his last day. So I didn't have the opportunity to get an update from Aldo and Michael last week. And, you know, pleased to report that Crane is about 95% of the way through its, what, its design. So and then it'll be submitted to the planning commission. And then there's some, you know, some more time for responses. We're probably about eight weeks away from that being ready to be sent out for bidding. We've gotten good news on parking, good news on transportation, good news on environmental. So there's surely just one more needle to thread on a cultural issue. But we should be able to be getting through that. So I think we're, we're on target for going out to bid towards the very end of the year.
That's wonderful. This is really coming along so well. Thank you very much for the update.
I was just going to say that last night I was chatting, I was at an outdoor dinner party and talking with a former Library Foundation member and mentioning the fact that this is going to be a cohesive campus and that the wall in between the library and the San Marino Center is going to be taken down. And she thought that was a fantastic idea to really bring this together. So people have a place to come to for recreation, for all sorts of community services things, for library programs. It's going to look really, really nice. And I think the task force has worked really hard along with the city staff to make sure that this is going to be a really nice facility that we can enjoy for years to come. So I'm really privileged to have been part of it. Thanks for forcing me, Dr. Marlowe.
Mr. Mayor, I love your background. That's incredible. Thank you.
Yeah, see how nice it's going to look. Nice timing.
And Mr. Mayor, I want to bounce back and Dr. Marlowe, about the new trustee to be appointed. I think you said recruiting is ongoing. Does that mean you're continuing to accept applications?
I believe that's correct.
I thought, I thought that it was closed because we did have an applicant who applied, but she was told it was after the deadline. So can you, if it's still open, we as trustees can help recruit by, well, I wouldn't say twisting arms, but making some phone calls.
Amanda, you, Amanda, you're over the city clerks. What did you?
Background and Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you have any update past what I have. But I know our city clerk, Christina Baker, has been working with the mayor and council member Talt just to figure out. We have some options. I think as of now, we have Lois's application in and a few others that came in past the deadlines. We just need to make a decision since our city code is relatively open with how we handle recruitments, the decision they want to make. So there's just a little strategy involved that we need the direction of our council to decide on. So, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you have any update past that. But that's, I know where we left it.
No, I just really need to nudge you up on our priority list a little bit. It hasn't been, gotten that nudge yet.
So should we call our friends or not? Would you accept new applications? Oh, Dr. Mulno, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
I would just, I, I, this has been such an ongoing issue and every month we have been put off. And it clearly is not a priority with the city to fill our Board of Trustees. We did not get it filled last year either. We have, we are, we are supposed to, according to the California Ed Code, have five members. The city has allowed us also to have two alternates, which is critically important. If somebody's not here and we don't have a quorum, we don't have a meeting, according to our bylaws. And I just wanted to point out that if appointing a new trustee is a problem for the city and not a high enough priority, according to the California Education Code, Article 2, Section 18910, "The public library shall be managed by a Board of Trustees consisting of five members to be appointed by the mayor, president of the Board of Trustees, or other executive head of the municipality." So the state of California gives us an option. If it's too much for you to get it done, let us do it. Because it is a priority for us, even if it's not a priority for you. Thank you.
Okay. Ken, did you want to say anything?
I mean, I apologize for us not getting it done. And we'll just move it up on our priority list. Because it is a responsibility of the city and the staff to do that.
So it sounds to me like you have applicants and you're in that process of looking at them and that new applications are not being accepted at this time. If that changes, could you please let all of us know so that we can assist you in, you know, drumming up some more applicants if that's the issue? Thank you. You're shaking her head. Yes.
Can I jump in for a second? I didn't know that things, the deadline has passed and I have already invited someone to apply. So my bad, I didn't know that we, the deadline had ended. So I was encouraging people to, a couple of people I've spoken to to apply. So sorry about that.
No, I think, I think that that's fine. You know, my bet would always be more choices, better. And if there are people that are passionate and interested, then I would say, you know, certainly have them get their application in. This really is just a matter of corralling two of our busiest council members and putting a meeting together so that they can evaluate it. And the city's municipal code does reserve that authority to the council. And I think that once, I think Ken has heard you loud and clear and will be clearing the decks of his calendar and will convey the urgency to council member Talt. And once we get the two of them together, then we can go ahead and get somebody appointed. But in the meantime, if you have other people who are interested, I would say please encourage them to apply. And until the moment that we get Ken and Steve in a proverbial room together, there's certainly no reason not to have more choice.
Thank you. That helps. Let's go on under administrative business. We've had some time this morning to introduce ourselves to Kathy and Kristen. And Jeff, maybe you're getting to know us a little bit better. Now let's get to know our new staff and move on to the agenda. Item 8, our city manager's staff introductions. Dr. Marlowe.
Well, thank you very much. It always feels so weird to say, you know, I'm glad to be here when the meeting is, you know, 50 minutes into the process. But, you know, I don't, I don't join you often, but I'm always delighted to be with a group of people that are so incredibly passionate about what you're doing. It's really, it's really wonderful to hear. So I am happy to be here this morning, of course, to introduce our new staff. But before I do that, I just want to say, I want to say thank you. You know, Irene obviously left us last week and she had been with us for so very long. And there's no question but that so much of her success was a direct result of your incredible partnership as a board. And so I just want to say thank you on behalf of all of us for doing everything that you have described in the first hour of this call, all the work that you've done, all the partnership that you offered, all the ideas that you had, all the things that you shepherded through. The partnership between you and Irene really was fantastic and I really do appreciate it. We are moving into a new world, a world without Irene, which is hard to, hard to imagine. But I am delighted to introduce our new staff. And of course, it is an unusual occasion where you essentially have three people that are brand-new to their roles at exactly the same time. And that is what we have here today. So Liz, I appreciate, Chair, that you welcomed our new staff already. So I'm a little late to the game then in this item. But we have three people to introduce and present to you this morning. Of course, first is our new director, Kathy Johnson, who's our Director of Community Services. She has an impeccable record in the business. Her accomplishments are long and her professionalism is vast. She is well-trained and well-developed as a community services professional at the executive level. She has served as a department head before. And we are very lucky to have grabbed her from a little north of here. She was the deputy director in the City of Lodi in a department that focused on parks and cultural services. So we, we felt like she was a great fit for us. Delighted to have her expertise and delighted to have her aboard. So she's been with us now for, I think, a whopping, is it, is this your third week, Kathy? Sorry, 11 days. 11 days. All right, very good. So she is starting on her third week. So she's clearly an old hand at all of this. So obviously, as she settles in and gets her feet under her and she and I work together on what her work plan is going to be, we appreciate all of, all of the support that you will give to her. Her success certainly will be partly in your hands. And I appreciate knowing that I can count on you guys to, to help her along. Her success certainly will be partly in your hands and I I appreciate knowing that I can count on you guys to to help her along. I should say she's not doing this in a vacuum, though, you know, although we have had a lot of starts and stops in this department. We are continuing to move forward and there is still institutional memory. Brian was doing a great job in moving things forward the way that the council had directed me to move things forward and we appreciate that and we were sad to lose him, although delighted now that we have Kathy to join our group. It's a it's a wonderful addition. And then, of course, Michael Throne, in the meantime, carrying things along. So Kathy is continuing all of that continuity. She has access to everything that's happened before and she is aware of all the ways that Brian was trying to move things forward and Michael as well, and she'll be she'll be certainly continuing in that vein. So she has all that institutional knowledge behind her, but she is brand new, so it's kind of a strange a strange position to be in and hopefully she'll get her feet under her relatively quickly. We also, I don't need to introduce you to Jeff Plumley because who doesn't know Jeff Plumley? But I am delighted to introduce you to him in his capacity as interim city librarian. Kathy did make that personnel decision, which I think is an awesome one to temporarily elevate Jeff into that role while we conduct the permanent recruitment for the position. And Jeff, as you know, has been with us for quite some time and I suspect rivals some of you for the amount of time he has lived in San Marino. So he can throw his qualifications out onto the table as well in that respect, but we're delighted to have such a resource in Jeff and he's already been enormously helpful to Kathy in terms of, you know, explaining the lay of the land and what happens and dynamics and so forth. So thank you so much, Jeff. We really appreciate it. And then last but definitely not least, we have a new management analyst as well. So I'm delighted to introduce you again to Kristin Shigenaga who has come to us with some wonderful experience. She most recently was with the City of Montebello as an analyst there. So we were lucky enough to have someone who has previously served as an analyst come into this capacity. She also did some interning with Montebello and also with the City of Agora Hills in the Finance Department. So she brings some really strong finance skills to the table. And I know she's looking forward to working with the Finance Department to figure out how to make the finance, the financial information that the board gets a little more directed by the Finance Department and therefore a little more official on our behalf for your use. And of course, she'll be filtering that information through Kathy for your presentation, but Kristin, I think is far more seasoned here than Kathy is, having been here for, I think, an extra week, week and a half. I think she beat Kathy here by by about a week and a half. So they are learning together. Of course, Kathy and Kristen both function with the Library Division and the Recreation Division. They both serve the department as a whole. So they are splitting their time accordingly and figuring out kind of how to do that. So again, really delighted to introduce the new staff and it's a fantastic team. And because Kathy was not here, I played the lion's share of the work in the recruitment process for the management analyst and really was so impressed with Kristin at every stage of the process. And I can certainly tell you that Irene was also very impressed with Kristin and 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 we just were so delighted to have her come aboard and and round us out. And I called Kathy and I said, I know you're not here yet, but let me tell you about who we're bringing aboard. So we definitely had some good communication about that. Let me think. We had talked a little bit about the recruitment already, so just to recap, I would say, you know, as you know, Kathy is going to be getting the brochure, draft template from HR and then we'll be working on figuring out what she's looking for in a person. This is an incredible opportunity to to bring somebody aboard that will help us move forward that will work in teamwork conjunction with the Recreation Division. As you may or may not know, the council reinstated the Recreation Manager position just a few weeks ago and Eddie Coverubius was promoted into that. So Kathy is going to have the great opportunity now to have a manager in each division, which is fantastic. That has not been the case up until this moment. So this really is a chance for Kathy to develop her management core as we move towards, you know, a holistic community services department that still includes some individuality for both the library and the recreation side. And so that will be that will be Kathy and I working on that that complex issue into the future and excited to get that taken care of. So we'll get that recruitment launched off as soon as we can. And again, Kathy will be making those decisions about who to bring aboard and kind of what we're looking for. And I I'm sure that if you have some thoughts individually about what you'd like her to consider putting in the brochure, you're welcome to email her. And then she and I will finalize that brochure and put it out there and run the process and then soon we'll be announcing, you know, potentially another new person to you to help move us forward. So I think that was all that I was going to announce by way of my my portion. Chair, I'm I'm happy to entertain any questions that you or the other board members might have.
Well, thank you. I have one sort of question and that is that during the I I look forward to seeing this brochure that really will describe a pretty incredible librarian position. I would like very much for the interview panel, whether it's the first interview or another interview, to include a member of the Board of Trustees. Doesn't have to be the chair or the vice chair, can be someone who's available at the time or that you think is going to bring the right kinds of questions to interview. And that would could also serve as the member of the public. So please consider that.
Certainly, we will consider that. I will tell you, I did get the same request from the council about the Community Development Director process. As I I trust most of you probably know, Aldo departed from us last Friday. Thankfully, not far. He's just going down to San Gabriel. So, you know, hopefully we can still talk to him every once in a while, but he has departed and we are launching that recruitment. The the recruitment process is a staff-owned process and I did tell the council that that there would not be a council member serving as part of that process. I suspect that that would hold true here as well. But certainly, I think Kathy and I can talk about ways to see about potentially introducing you all to the final candidates, if that's where we get to. And I absolutely would love for you to submit questions. I think, Liz, you make an incredibly astute point. There are questions that will occur to you that will not occur to us. And if you could forward those to Kathy, we can certainly be sure that that's part of the interview process. But in the end, as I told the council in regards to the Community Development Director position, I'm the one that's going to be held accountable for whether I make a good hire or a bad hire, so I need to be able to do that. So please certainly forward your input over to Kathy or to me if you want, but Kathy really is your point person. And we will make sure to get your thoughts in there however we can.
Any other questions for Dr. Marlowe? Linda?
I just have I have one comment. I and I I agree strongly with Liz that the Board of Trustees needs to be represented in the in the choice of bringing in a new a new librarian. I would I would highly recommend that Kathy acquaint herself with the California Education Code and the responsibilities that the California Education Code gives to the Board of Trustees. Because within within the the articles and sections in there, it does say that that the employees and officers of the library hold their offices and positions at the pleasure of the Board of Trustees and I I understand that this is a hiring issue as far as the city is concerned and we cannot involve ourselves in HR issues, but I think that there is a complex overlap between what the state library is telling us and what the city is telling us. And I think that we would work so much better together if we could get on the same page and maybe, you know, and go through even go through all of this point by point and come to an understanding where where we don't where we're not at loggerheads. I think that that would be the best thing for the city. It would be the best thing for the library.
You know, maybe we make this a conversation for the next meeting because as I understand it, you know, the if the cities in its ordinances have provisions that define what the role of the board is, the city the city's ordinances take precedence. It's not the state ordinance.
I I that that's part of that's part of the conversation we need to have. And I think that I think we all need to be on the same. You know, make make this playing field clear and and let's get rid of the complications. I I it would it would make everything so much easier and for all of us and I mean, my my hope, I mean, everything that I say is really with the best interest of the library at heart. And I mean, to the city, the city is obviously important to me. I would not have lived here as long as I have if it wasn't. But I have to say that the library and the city are, you know, they they I can't really choose one over the other. And I just I want to see it. I want to see it work better and I'm not I've not been I've not been thrilled at the at the communication and the way that that some of the issues have been handled in the last couple of years. And so I I think it would with with and with Kathy in a new position, I think this would be the ideal time for us to sit down maybe with a council representative with Kathy with a with a trustee representative. Doesn't have to be me. It can be, you know, any member of of the of the board, but I just think that this would be a the optimum time to kind of lay everything out.
Okay. Well, with Kathy's help, I'll be glad to put together do a little research and put together a a position paper on what I what we believe the roles and responsibilities for the board are because I believe it's it's more of an advisory capacity and not a fiduciary capacity. And we'll be glad to lay that out and then we can have a a a conversation about it so that we all understand roles and responsibilities.
The Ed Code lays out two different types of library boards. It is our job is advisory and fiduciary, but we are not an authoritative board. Altadena's Public Library is an authoritative board. And what that means is they hire, supervise, evaluate, and terminate the main librarian. I don't know if they do it for additional personnel. We're not that kind of a library board, so I I think we have to have caution in how we are strictly advisory and we oversee the finances and but not we're not the authoritative. I think that's the correct term. And so we also have to be careful when we read the different sections of the Ed Code and make sure that we're reading and interpreting the sections that apply to us. South Pasadena's Public Library Board recently went through this and they are shifting from being an authoritative board that hires, supervises, and terminates their librarian and they're shifting into becoming a board like we are, advisory and fiduciary. So they may have some things in their recent board packets that might help us look at that together.
Yeah, I I think we need to all understand, yes, there is the Cal- California Education Code, but then there's also the San Marino City Code. And we need to, you know, understand which which is an effect for which roles and responsibilities, which is something I think we can clearly, you know, put on paper and circulate and share and have a conversation about.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, would you be willing agenda? I heard I heard Ken volunteer to write a staff report, which was very exciting. And then we could we could all have a discussion next month. I'd be happy to come back for that also. Is that is that for next month? Will that work?
Are you asking Ken if he's going to write the report by next month?
No, he's already said he's going to write the report. I I trust that he meant that. I'm asking you, Madam Chair, if you.
I think that that is something that when we meet to plan the agenda for October, it'll be we'll do that in two to three weeks and we'll see if the report is ready and what other kinds of information we need. I also want to be sensitive to the fact that Kathy and Kristen are very new and that there might be other priorities that go above that. I do think I do think our trustees are doing a great job and we're not out for a big power grab right now. So I think it's something that we can also be working on across some months.
That's whatever works for you guys. I I know that Dr. Molno and I don't usually agree on things, but I actually I agree with her on this one, that the the question of where does the Ed Code play in? Where does the city's code play in? The fact that we all have not been on the same page. I I think Dr. Molno is right. It's caused a lot of problems for the last few years and I I I hate that. I know I I think she used the word loggerheads. I have felt that way also. It certainly is not what I want. It's very uncomfortable. I don't want us operating like that either, so I, of course, would be happy to work with Ken. But he's he's pretty fast. I don't know if you've ever assigned him work. He gets it done pretty quickly. He's I mean, I would hire him if I could, but I I just out of, you know, I just want to say I I agree with Dr. Molno. I think it's put us at odds and I don't think that's a good place for us to be. And I I would love to resolve this sooner rather than later so that we can all be on the same page and playing from the same book.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think we all want Kathy to be incredibly successful in her role.
Yes, absolutely.
I agree. So on that note, let's go on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Director's Report. And when Kathy and Kristen and I spoke a couple of weeks ago, I asked Kathy to just keep this very short because she'd still be new. So Kathy, you can take as much time as you want.
Hi, everybody. Hello, good morning and and I I'm so excited to be here and and I feel like I am drinking from a fire hose, though. So so bear with me. And I will make, you know, my remarks short this morning, but in the future it will be you'll be receiving a written report from me. That'll be part of your packet. And then I will just touch on any additional highlights or respond to questions and answers at that point. I do want to let you know, everybody, very quickly, while I I come to this position today as a as a classically trained municipal parks, recreation, cultural services, community services professional. And and if you looked at my resume, you know, I I didn't have the library function underneath my responsibilities. However, I have worked for many years in partnership with libraries, the the library, local library department as a a fellow department and internal services division for nearly every city I've served. I I really look forward to developing this this community services department here for the City of San Marino. I I am a mother. I am a lifelong learner. I raised my children just as you did in the library. And I'm a fan of books and and education and learning while my children are now in college. You know, I'm a huge proponent of of libraries for for all of the same reasons. I'm extremely excited about the new San Marino Center and the new campus. I do bring a background in facility development. I've opened many new facilities, renovated several new facility or several older facilities, so I'm really excited to jump on that when when the time permits that I get involved in that. A lot of the comments that the Chair Chairman Hollandworth, as well as City Manager, spoke of, I had on my list as a verbal report, the recruitment for the librarian, city librarian position. I don't need to speak. Marcella pretty much summed that up. She did introduce Jeff as our acting library manager and we have our first one-on-one today to kind of get ourselves organized. So looking forward to that. I did want to share that I am a professional municipal employee who who loves to get involved in the community. So while I am new to San Marino, I I because of the high profile of community services, I I launch myself into getting involved and getting connected as soon as possible. I did attend the City Club event last Tuesday night. That was a very enlightening and enjoyable. I do plan on meeting with the Library Foundation, Cindy and Hal, very soon for a meet and greet. I do plan on scheduling a meeting with the friends of the public library, friends of library on and the bookstore folks. So Shelley and Kathy, I believe. And then I know as far as the verbal director report, I've asked Jeff to please provide because I am coming up to speed with day-to-day operations and programming. I've asked him to prepare a few remarks. So so I'm going to hand over, you know, my portion here to Jeff. If you could unmute yourself, Jeff, and kind of report a little bit on on day-to-day operations and things that would be of interest to the board.
Yes, thank you, Kathy. Happy to do that. Happy to see everyone this morning. I wanted to report on a few of the library programs for adults that that we've had. This last Saturday, we had East East meets West Parent Education Club program on our outdoor patio, the shallow patio. Attendance was good on this, over thirty attendees. On September the sixteenth, we had Observing the Night Sky. On September the sixteenth, we had Observing the Night Sky with NASA astronomer, uh, Carson Brucker. Carson Brucker grew up in San Marino, by the way. Excellent interest and attendance on that, that forty-five people. Uh, coming up, we have an iPad class beginning September twenty-nine, runs through November the seventeenth. And that's an eight-week class. It comes with an iPad checked out from the library. We have many calls, uh, in interest on classes such as these. And then my favorite, of course, uh, upcoming on October the ninth is the Edgar Allan Poe, uh, Dramatic Interpretation by Duffy Hudson. It's going to be, uh, in the patio. He'll be doing Annabelle Lee, The Raven, and The Telltale Heart. For youth programs, we have weekly storytimes held at, uh, Lacy Park, baby lapses, toddler and preschool. These storytimes will run for the first week in October and then will resume, uh, on October twenty-fifth. Moving along the library operations, circulation is gradually increasing. We've not had the foot traffic that I anticipated we would have, but, uh, circulation is increasing. Passport, uh, demand for passports is intense, I should say. Very strong. And I'm in touch with the US Department of State, uh, to arrange for passport training for our new hires. I'm in touch with the Department of State also to increase the acceptance hours, uh, to three evenings a week, which will help meet the demand and it will increase our revenue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Does anybody have any questions for me, uh, that I maybe didn't touch on? I'm just trying to keep it brief. The meeting's, uh, running long. So, any burning questions? Anybody? Well, feel free to, to give me a call. I would love to meet with each of you one-on-one. It's my hope that I can schedule that time and, and do my own outreach to each of you, uh, as I get through my first thirty, sixty, ninety days.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Jeff, I just want to know where some of these people are going with their passports during the pandemic. And I mean, aren't we going to get to saturation point with the passports? I just, it, it's so impressive what you and your staff are doing. And I'm so appreciative of the fundraising aspect, but also it's a service. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think people are, are just more than ready for a big trip.
Thank you. We invite public comment, um, at the meetings. This is another opportunity for public comment. Kristen, is there anybody in the waiting room or have you received any other, um, communication regarding public comment?
No, I have not.
Thank you. We're going to, um, adjourn this meeting. And Amanda, we're going to leave it to you to let us know in October if and when we're coming back in person. We're fine with Zoom, but we're ready for in-person when you're ready for us. Our meeting is adjourned at nine sixteen. We'll meet again on Monday, October twenty-fifth at eight AM. Thank you all.